Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting, June 2, 2016. Before we turn over to Mr. LaLance for the Pledge Allegiance, I want to read just some things. We lost a fellow council member this past week. Ms. Mary Huda was elected to the City Council in 1982, and she served for 12 years until 1994. She was on the Multi-Purpose Recreation Facility Commission, which is the group that actually guided the design and the construction of Sportscom. She was on Parks and Rec, the Senior Citizens Board, the Tree Board. Mother and father-in-law, who are born and raised here, said that they were telling me about Ms. Huda, who we all knew, but said that there would not be a tree in Murfreesboro if it wasn't for Ms. Mary, that she was so passionate about saving trees. She was on the Beautification Commission, later renamed the Urban Environmental Commission, and she served on the Water and Sewer Board. She was active in many, many other organizations in this community and can honestly say that Murfreesboro has lost a leader in this community. So, her family will be in our thoughts and our prayers. Mr. Lance?
If you guys will bow with me, please. Lord, thank you for the blessings in our lives. Thank you for this city. Thank you for this council. Lord, we pray a special blessing to you tonight for the Huda family, and I hope that you will be with them and comfort their family and bring them some peace. And God, as always, if you will please be with us tonight as we make decisions. This is an especially difficult season for all of us up here, and, you know, there's just lots of variables, and we really need your help and your wisdom, and we need you here tonight. We pray for that. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman LaLance.
Takes this all.
Spock, if you'll take the control, that'd be great.
Thank you. [laughing] I thought at least it's not you or Brenner.
You know, we have a lot of conversations, especially we're talking about Ms. Huda, and she served on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And so, May 21st, so we're a little late, but it was Kids to Park Day. And so, I want to read, "May 21st was the sixth Kids to Park Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas Kids to Park Days empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades, and whereas we should introduce a new generation to our parks," excuse me, "whereas we should encourage children to lead more active lifestyles, combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypocalcemia. And whereas Kids to Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. Whereas Kids to Park Days will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors." Now, therefore, Asha McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim May 21st as Kids to Park Day, and urge all citizens of Murfreesboro to make time on this day to take children to live in their, excuse me, in children in their lives to a neighborhood state or national park. And I think Mr. Goodwin's here. Is Mr. Goodwin here? No? All right, well, Mr. Lance, we'll give this to you to make sure it's posted in one of our recreation facilities. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
All right, we'll now move to the consent agenda.
There's no questions or comments on the consent agenda. A move that'd be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You've got three sets of meetings, the May 12, 2016 Special Joint Meeting with the Murfreesboro Power Board, the May 12, 2016 Regular Meeting, and the May 19, 2016 Special Meeting for Budget Review.
Considering no objections, a move for approval.
Second. Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Excuse me. First reading, you have a letter from the City Attorney regarding ordinance 16023, and this is about city code deletions and amendments.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. As I believe you know, we, the legal department is in the process of getting our city code recodified, a new code adopted, getting it put online for everyone's convenience. Part of that process is that there's an initial fee, an initial cost to put it online, and then afterwards, there are per-page charges for amendments and deletions. We thought this was a good time, before it goes online, to eliminate some provisions that are either completely outdated, or that, and I think in some cases, have never been implemented in the first place. So, I'd review briefly what we're proposing to eliminate from our code of ordinances. First of all, with animals infouled, we have a provision in our code for essentially a city dog pound, an animal control officer. That's now all handled by the county. We don't anticipate that we'll ever do that, and so, we're proposing that those provisions simply be eliminated. As regard to fair housing, we have some laws that prohibit fair housing, prohibit housing discrimination, and we will keep those on our code. We also have a provision in there to have, to set up a Fair Housing Council that would investigate charges of discrimination and that sort of thing. I don't believe we've ever set that up. We don't have it today, and those are better, really better handled by the Tennessee Fair Housing Council and other agencies, rather than to have a duplicate city function. So, we're proposing to eliminate the provisions regarding the Fair Housing Council. This was also a recommendation of a consultant who had visited us a couple of years and did a study of our, of the impediments to fair housing here in Murfreesboro. He recommended that. Regarding health and sanitation in Chapter 16, we had provisions in there basically for a city health department. That's really all been taken over by Rutherford County now and other state laws and state agencies. We believe that the, virtually the entirety of, well, actually, the entirety of that can be eliminated and just taken out of our code. In Chapter 17 and a half, we have three improvement districts that are all fully complete. They're fully funded. All the acquisitions have been done. There is nothing left for those to do, and we feel that these should just be eliminated at this time. With regard to licenses and taxes, we're recommending some, a change in Section 18.1 to comply with state law. There's a provision for a motion theater gross tax, gross receipts tax that is now handled by state law. We don't collect that. There's a provision for payment of taxes and installments, which we don't use, and as I understand it, haven't used in years. We'd go ahead and just take that out. There's a provision for a city board of tax equalization, which we don't have. That's handled through the county. So, we would propose to delete these provisions from our code. We have a chapter on massage parlors, and this would be to regulate the licensed massage parlors that are now licensed by the state, and we feel that's duplicative. We haven't used it, and so, we're recommending that that just simply be eliminated. There are several provisions regarding the Police Department in Chapter 24. There's a provision for jailers' fees, which we don't do, we haven't used, so we would like to just go ahead and take that out. We have a provision allowing auxiliary police. I'm not sure if that ever was done, but it's certainly not being done now, and through the conversation with the Police Department, no plan to do such a thing, so we would like to take that out. There are some provisions regarding abandoned property, and those duties have been taken over by other, other functions, or are covered by other portions of our ordinances, so we're asking that, that those be deleted. Finally, we have essentially a registration process for persons convicted of infamous crimes. We feel that's adequately covered by the state's sex offender registry and other registries set up by the state. We don't feel, it hasn't been implemented here, and we don't feel any need to implement it. There is no fiscal impact to this, other than that it will save us some money when, once we do get the code put into a current form. The city manager and the department's head, as referenced in the letter, are in line with this, so we would ask that this ordinance be passed on first reading. That makes these changes. I'd be, I didn't want to spend time going through a great detail of this. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions about, about the, about what's being taken out, and also about what's being left in, if someone has a question about that.
A move to approve the recommendations. City Attorney.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move into new business. Consider certificate of compliance for wine in retail stores for Troy K. Lane at Kroger Number 565, 4432, Veterans Parkway.
Mayor, as you read, this is an application for wine in a grocery store, and the application is in order, so once you approve it, they can move on to the state level. I recommend approval.
A move for approval.
Second. Motion second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 16R PH 19 adopted by the City Council on April 21, 2016, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 9.5 acres located along Las Casas Pike and North Rutherford Boulevard from planned commercial development district to commercial fringe CF District. George Heslin Jr., applicant, knows to set public hearing was published in May 16, 2016, issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First public hearing this evening is for you to consider an application for zoning change, which has been submitted to you, and it's for property that's located along Las Casas Pike, North Rutherford Boulevard, and Old Las Casas Road, and you can see it on the illustration provided in your packet, and I think coming up on the screen in just a moment. This property is shaded blue on the map that you have, and you can see that it's currently zoned PCD, Planned Commercial District, and it was zoned such in 2003 to allow a grocery store with retail shops to be located here, and those of you who've been around may recall that it's for, it was for a proposed Harris Teeter grocery store. And at that time, the property was owned CF, CL, and RM 16. CF is Commercial Fringe District, CL is Local Commercial District, and RM 16 is Multifamily Residential District. The property to the south is zoned RM 16 and CL as well, and is location of a church. The property to the north, across North Rutherford Boulevard, is owned CH and CF, and is the location of Kroger and several out parcels. At the time that this property, the subject property, was rezoned, the Kroger did not exist, and the property to the north was undeveloped. It, it's important to note that Kroger has acquired the Harris Teeter store, and that's part of the reason that they had no desire to move forward with building a grocery store right across from their existing grocery store now. So, the Kroger is zoned, or is located in the property's zone CH. Across Las Casas Pike is a commercial node, and that's at the intersection of Las Casas and East Northfield Boulevard. Those properties are zoned Commercial Fringe District and Commercial Local District, and are location of several small commercial uses. The property to the east is zoned Multifamily Residential District, and Commercial Fringe is also the location of another church. The subject property has not developed since the PCD was approved in 2003. The subject property also has what staff has been referring to as Little Garrison Creek, which is also known as the Little Big Ditch, which is not the Big Ditch, and it is also an unnamed tributary of Bushman Creek, and is identified as a water of the state, and it crosses the subject property. So, any future development would have to consider that as a water of the state, and is be designed to meet both our local and state regulations. I've included some additional materials in your agenda packet that show you the proposed uses that were approved in 2003, when the PCD was approved. I've also included a three-pages excerpt of our zoning ordinance that tells you what types of uses are permitted in the CF District, which is what the applicants are asking for you to zone this property. It was originally zoned RM 16, CL, and CF, but the majority of the property is zoned CF in 2003. So, essentially, they're asking to go back to the zoning before CF, but they didn't feel that they needed to ask for the most intensive commercial use that we have, which is commercial highway or CH. So, the application is for you to consider zoning this from PCD to CF. The staff and planning commission recommended a neighborhood meeting be held, because when this was originally debated in 2003, there was much discourse. A neighborhood meeting was held on March 29 at St. Mark's Church, and there were very few people who showed up, and those who showed up did not show any opposition to the application, and they thought that it was a reasonable request. The planning commission, of course, did hold a public hearing, and their recommendation to you is that you do approve this application to zone the property from PCD to CF. The vote was unanimous the evening of the public hearing. If you have questions regarding this application, I'd be glad to answer them, either before or after your public hearing.
All right. We'll conduct a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium if you will. If you'll keep your comments direct to the City Council, if you'll state your name and your address. If you're representing a group, you can get five minutes. If you're representing just yourself, you can get three minutes. So, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Public hearing is open. Okay? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16OZ 19 to rezone an area along Las Casas Pike and North Rutherford Boulevard to Commercial Fringe CF District 2016-413.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 16R PH 20 adopted by the City Council on April 21, 2016, will conduct a public hearing to consider, one, the adoption of a plan of services for an annexation of .59 acres, and, two, zoning of approximately .55 acres located along Veterans Parkway to Commercial Fringe CF District, which had been proposed to be annexed to the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and rezone approximately 6.5 acres located along Veterans Parkway from residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District, to Commercial Fringe CF District, 2016 507, and 2016 412. Notice of said public hearing was published in the May 16, 2016 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our second public hearing tonight pertains to property located at 4546 Veterans Parkway, and it is the parcel that is along the east side of Veterans Parkway, just to the south of the Cloister subdivision. And I believe that we were having some technical difficulties a moment ago getting the maps on the screen, and there apparently is a switch somewhere on this, on this podium that needs to be switched, but I do not know which switch it is. So, bear with me, I will just describe it verbally. Subject property, as I mentioned, is along the east side of Veterans Parkway. The majority of the property was annexed into the city limits in 2013. Here comes Mr. Page to the rescue.
The majority of the property was annexed into the city limits in 2013, and there was a companion zoning request at the time to RM 16. The applicant has requested that 20 feet of a 30-foot strip that was along the northern boundary of the property be annexed. The, the county subdivisions that are located to the east, the, there we go, the Meadow Lane and Franklin Estate subdivisions are in the unincorporated county. If the entire parcel had been annexed, then the property to the east would have been essentially what we have called an island of unincorporated county in the middle of the city limits. So, a 30-foot strip of land was, was left out along the northern boundary of this property. Mr. Reed would like to develop the subject property, and as such, with that 30-foot strip being left in the county, it was making it a little bit tricky with regards to jurisdiction, especially if he intended to construct buildings within that 30 feet. The county's regulations, development and zoning regulations would have been different than the city's development and zoning regulations, so it was, it was just presenting some difficulties moving forward with development. So, Mr. Reed requested the annexation of 20 feet of that 30-feet, 30-foot strip. You'll recall that, that over the last couple of years, we had begun employing a 10-foot strip in order to keep from having to, in order to keep from completely encircling property that is in the county. And so, this would still leave that 10-foot strip along the northern boundary of the subject property, ensuring that the property to the east was not encircled. An annexation plan of services is included in your agenda packets. This is just essentially a 20-foot strip of, of land that does not have any development or structures on it. The annexation plan of services demonstrates that the city will be able to provide services. The property owner has petitioned the city for annexation in writing. The property is contiguous with the existing city limits, and it is within the city's urban growth boundary. Also worthy of note is that there is also a 20-foot strip of Veterans Parkway right-of-way that is included in this annexation. And I will have more about this property in my presentation regarding the zoning, prior to the zoning public hearing. Mr. Reed is here if you have any questions about the annexation request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Matthew, I think I remember this property from a few months ago, where we specifically talked about the zoning that we did directly to the south of this, and that kind of what this was going to leave, and how difficult that was going to be, and whether or not it was the right thing for us to do based on that situation.
Yes.
Does this fix that, or does it make it worse? Does it make it better?
Well, the zoning of the property?
Yeah, whatever we're talking about doing here, does it, does it go along with what we did a few months ago?
Well, what we did a few months ago with respect to the zoning?
To the south, the property to the south.
Yeah, the property to the south was, Mr. Reed had requested commercial highway for that property, and the City Council approved commercial fringe on the property directly to the south. And so, what Mr. Reed has done is instead of requesting commercial highway for this property, directly abutting the Cloister subdivision, he has requested commercial fringe from the get-go. Commercial fringe does offer certain protections that commercial highway doesn't. It does not permit heavier commercial uses with outdoor elements such as auto sales, auto repair, contractor storage, things that commercial highway does permit. And then, it, some of the other uses that commercial fringe does permit, there are some additional protections that commercial fringe offers that commercial highway doesn't. For example, gas pumps have to be a certain distance from residentially-zoned property. Speaker boxes at drive-throughs have to be a certain distance from residentially-zoned properties. So, the commercial fringe zoning in and of itself is, is quite a bit more sensitive to adjacent residential zoning than commercial highway.
Yeah, so what we talked about earlier was we were questioning whether or not you could actually get any RM 16 buildings essentially in that little strip, and that, you know, we suspected that this might be changed, but I guess at the time, Mr. Reed wasn't ready to ask for any difference. Is that, is that, is that how you remember that, too?
Well, the zoning of the property to RM 16 was approved in 2013, and the three properties to the south are what we considered back in 2015, and what was rezoned commercial at that time. Mr. Reed had not requested rezoning for this parcel at that time, but he did bring this request forward now, and as far as what could be developed on that RM 16 portion, if it were to be remain, if it were to remain RM 16, I think there's likely that there could be a, a, you could either have buildings running perpendicular to Veterans Parkway, going all the way down either the south or the north property line with parking on whatever side the buildings are not on. So, I think that it would be reasonable to expect that it could be developed, but it would be a little bit more difficult to design, I think, because of the long and narrow nature of the property. What, what he wants to do, and of course, we're getting into the zoning discussion now, what Mr. Reed wants to do is he wants to combine the property that's, that's in question tonight with the property that he owns to the south that was rezoned to Commercial Fringe back in 2015, and do a, or develop that property as one development with both parcels being developed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. We'll now conduct a public hearing on a plan of services for an annexation of approximately .59 acres located along Veterans Parkway. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 16R PS 20 to adopt a plan of services for approximately .59 acres located along Veterans Parkway. Mary Reed, applicant, 2016 507.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 16R A20 to annex approximately .59 acres located along Veterans Parkway. Mary Reed, applicant.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. The next item is with regards to the zoning of the property, and the zoning request is a twofold request. There is a request to rezone the portion that is in blue, which is the portion that is, was annexed in 2013 and zoned RM 16 simultaneous with annexation. That's about 6.5 acres requested to be rezoned from RM 16 to CF. And then, the 20-foot strip that you just took action to annex along the northern property line, the applicant is requesting to have that zoned Commercial Fringe simultaneous with annexation. The applicant, as I mentioned before, would like to develop both this parcel and the parcel to the south, which has the CF label on it, with a commercial development, and of course, whatever could be zone, whatever could be developed in Commercial Fringe, meaning our minimum requirements, could be developed. But I believe that he has a, kind of a tentative plan to do some retail office and possibly some self-storage in there as well. The Commercial Fringe Zone, as I mentioned, is, was designed to be more sensitive to adjacent-
adjacent residential areas than the commercial highway zone, and for the reasons that I mentioned in the previous public hearing. The property directly to the north is zoned PRD, Planned Residential District, and that is the Cloister Single Family Residential Subdivision. The property directly to the east of the subject property across overall creek are the Meadow Lane and Franklin Road Estates subdivisions, which are located in the unincorporated county and developed with single-family residential homes. The properties directly to the south are undeveloped and zoned commercial fringe and commercial highway. The Kroger is developing further to the south at the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road, and it is zoned commercial highway. The properties directly across Veterans Parkway are in the unincorporated county and are large estate lots with single-family homes on them, located in the unincorporated county. The property is part of the study area for the General Development Plan for the Blackman Community, which was adopted around 2000, and the Future Land Use Map for the General Development Plan for the Blackman Community recommends that the subject property develop as medium-density residential, which it defined as planned areas of single-family homes and attached or zero-lot-line units with a density of four to eight units per acre. So that's what the Future Land Use Map showed, but the text of the plan also recommended that commercial development patterns, recommended strong support for nodal commercial development patterns centered on major street intersections, and it actually recommended the intersection of Franklin Road and Veterans Parkway as a, as a commercial node. And so with that being said, I will mention also that the planning staff and the applicant did host a neighborhood meeting on April the 4th, and from what Mr. Whitaker told me, there were, I believe, about 12 to 15 people in attendance at that, at that neighborhood meeting. I could not attend that night because my daughter was born earlier that day. I think my wife would have been mad at me, but if I'd attended that. But at any rate, the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and as I mentioned, Mr. Reed is here also if you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. We'll now conduct a public hearing on zoning approximately .55 acres along Veterans Parkway as commercial fringe district simultaneous with annexation and a rezon approximately 6.5 acres along Veterans Parkway from residential multifamily 16 district to commercial fringe CF district, Mary Reed applicant. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
You've got to let me finish my, all right? We have a motion is second to consider for passage on first reading orders.
I know that was directed at me, Doug.
Ms. Wright, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 16 RA PH 21 adopted by the city council on April 21, 2016, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately .43 acres located at 1216 North Maple from planned commercial development PC district to commercial fringe CF district. Ms. Nancy Brown, applicant 2016-416. Notice of said public hearing was published in the May 16, 2016 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our final public hearing tonight with regards to zoning is a property located at 1216 North Maple Street. It's the property colored in orange on the map, and it is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of North Maple Street and West McKnight Drive. Those of us who live on the north side of town, going north away from downtown, on the way home from work, drive by this property quite frequently, I know I do each day. The property was originally developed with a single-family home, and up until 2003 was zoned RD, which is residential duplex. The applicant in 2003 came to the Planning Commission and City Council and requested a rezoning to PCD, Planned Commercial District. Ms. Brown is a dance teacher and wanted to both continue to reside at the property, but also to construct a new building on the property to house a dance studio. She was approved for that rezoning to PCD in 2003, and subsequently constructed the building addition which houses the dance studio to this day. Ms. Brown has indicated in filing this request that she hopes to close her dance studio at some time in the future, at a date not yet to be determined, and to put her property on the market to sell it. The PCD zoning is very limiting in this instance because it only allows two uses. It allows single-family residents, and it allows a dance studio. So unless you are looking to use the property as a single-family residence in a dance studio, the property would really hold no use for you under the current PCD zoning. So Ms. Brown has made application to rezone the property to commercial fringe for, to make the property more marketable as she seeks to sell the property. The property is .43 acres, does have a paved parking, paved stripe parking area adjacent to the dance studio with a driveway coming in off of West McKnight. Any future development of the property, any building additions or parking improvements, if the property were to be rezoned to commercial fringe, would have to comply with our minimum zoning and development regulations. The property is bordered on its east and south sides by residential duplex RD zoning, and with mostly single-family uses, but also some duplex uses as well. Directly in front of the subject property is the intersection of where Maple, McKnight, and Memorial all converge, and there is commercial highway zoning directly in front of the subject property, where Blue Coast Burrito, there's a sign company, a barber shop. To the north across McKnight are, is a real estate office and a Christian Science reading room, and so Ms. Brown feels that this property has more utility as a commercially-zoned parcel, considering its visible location at this highly-traveled intersection. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Ms. Brown is in attendance as well if you have any questions for her. Oh, and the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this request to rezone to commercial fringe.
Okay. We'll consider, or excuse me, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Mayor McFarland, city council members, I am Nancy Brown, and I am the owner and resident of 1216 North Maple Street. I am here tonight only to answer any questions that you may have for me regarding my property.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading order 160OZ 21 to rezon an area at 1216 North Maple Street to commercial fringe CF district, 2016-416. Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Okay. Pursuant to provisions of TCA 6-56206 in the city charter, conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed 2016-2017 city of Murfreesboro budget. Notice of said public hearing was published in the May 23, 2016 issue of a local newspaper. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the budget, please come to the podium.
I'm Richard Baines, Parkview Terrace, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. A public hearing in open mic at the same night is like two furs at the grocery store. A few weeks ago, there was a discussion about how to use the funds derived from red light citations, and I think Mayor McFarland put forth an idea that the funds, I think, go into the general fund in the budget, and the mayor proposed an idea of educating, education, and correct me if I got that wrong, of by putting out signs and whatnot, educating people about traffic. My thought tonight is establish a line item in the budget funded by the red light fund and directed at pedestrian safety. Signage, designated safe crossing areas, make people aware of what the law is in Murfreesboro, if we do have a law like they do in other parts of the country where pedestrians have the right of way in a crosswalk. I don't even know if we have that ordinance. I don't even know if we have a jaywalking ordinance, a law in Murfreesboro, because in order to violate a jaywalking law, you have to have crosswalks, and we don't have that many. And I think that we should use part of that money to set up, to establish safe crossing areas for the pedestrians in Murfreesboro. I don't know where that line item would go in the budget, but I, I'm sure you can find a place. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider any changes to the proposed 2016-2017 budget.
There just is maybe a quick reach back to the meeting we had at 5:00. We had the items that were on the memorandum that I had provided. Mr. Shacklet also identified some changes to outside agencies, and there may be others that you wish to discuss. Ms. Tucker was able in the break to come up with a number for the additional money for the tree climber position as well.
Okay, so you've got the changes to outside agencies. You have the items that are in Mr. Lyons' memorandum, where we're changing some items that were left out and additional funds that were added.
Is there any time to move on the outside agencies?
Do we need to do that as a separate motion on the outside agencies, or I guess we do need to have a motion to add that to the, is that what you're?
I think you would, deferring to legal, I think you'd want to make a motion to add it before you pass it, and then you would pass it with those motions in.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion that we approve, the list of changes in the outside agency funding that I had mentioned. I need to go through that.
I think we have, yeah, have that.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so that's our first.
No, I'm sorry. I misunderstood something. I thought we were adding this to what we were getting ready to vote on.
That's what we're, that's what we're doing. So what we're going to do is vote on each individual item change, and then we'll vote on all of those as amended into the budget.
But as far as first reading on the budget itself?
No, no, that was not, yeah, this was just an amendment to adding that.
That's what I thought.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Essentially, this is an amendment to the budget before we vote on the budget.
Exactly.
Right. And so there should be a separate motion now for the changes that had been proposed by staff, by the city manager.
And that would include an $825,000 reduction on the hotel motel tax, since you all asked?
I would like to make a motion that we remove the hotel motel tax completely.
But just the increase?
The increase, correct.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I'm going to have to make a comment, but I kind of figure how things will go. But while I wouldn't necessarily agree with the 2.5% increase, this is, I would certainly like to see, and I guess this message might be for the chamber and CDB, is to allocate resources that are being collected for, by tourists, to enhance some of the venues and events that come to our community, and not just siphon them to, to one particular area of our community. As much as I love sports, and I committed a lot of my life to supporting youth activities and youth sports in our community, and they do wonderful things. I worked during spring fling for the chamber as a volunteer. I would like to see, we have a great opportunity to tell the story of our community in heritage tourism, and I would like to see some resources, some of the money that's being raised out of this particular, these funds to be directed towards that, and to be a little bit more intentional about how we support the venues and the events in our community.
And can I clarify something, too, with the way the motion's made? We're voting to not have an increase.
Not have an increase.
So if I say aye, that means not have an increase.
We're voting in favor of eliminating the hotel tax increase.
Have we?
It feels like I want to say no, but, you know, just from the way it is.
Aye to the no is what we're doing, right?
You know the song?
Yes to the no.
Okay. And we had given some conversation to the fact that did we know enough to do this at this point in time? There were some other alternatives to a smaller increase, to looking at it as an option in the future at some, to, to create additional, and, you know, this, this takes that off the table for this. Maybe the issue, maybe the issue might be that if, if this is off this budget, then maybe we can reintroduce it as a consideration after this particular budget, as some discussion as to how we can raise some resources if they need to be directed towards specific things.
Yeah, we can do that before next year, right?
We can do that really any time, can't we? Yeah.
And I think that's what the Senate and the council is, is to have some extended study on this because we don't want to.
Be open for that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think what we're going back to now is, is I think there's several things that the council does agree on, and, and as far as the allocations and where the money goes and, and who gets the money, you know, personally, I'm, I'm opposed to reaching into the pockets of people and taking money from them, period. But the, but I understand that we do have to have operating expenses, and if the need is there, and you have to, you know, let's just be upfront about it and say it's a tax increase, and we're going to charge you more money. But the, let's don't hide behind the term fee, and let's don't hide behind the term of we ain't had a tax increase in 18 years, and let's, let's, let's just be honest and call a tax increase a tax increase, and call a fee a tax increase as well, because you're taking money away from people. And, but the, the one thing that I think we're, we're, we're struggling with through this budget process now is the fact that I, I think there's certain allocations that had we had a retreat, which I think we've all asked for repeatedly, and somehow not been able to get one put together, there's.
Hold that thought real quick. We've got a motion on the table to take on the hotel motel tax, and then we can get to that, because we've got a motion is second on there.
All right. I'm holding that thought.
Yeah, hold that thought. Let's get the motion in the second, then absolutely we'll go right, straight back to you on, on that, because I'm, I'm with you. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Now back to you, Eddie.
Okay, and, and, and part of my point is, is part of the trouble that
Now back to you, Eddie.
Okay. And, and, and part of my point is, is part of the trouble that we're having through this process is we, we have asked repeatedly, we need to have a retreat. And I know there's been times that I was even against it because of the amount of money that was going to be spent on a retreat. But I think we hammered it out a few months ago that we all agreed that we needed to meet and so that we could sit down and lay 100 pennies on the table and start pushing those pennies in the direction that we wanted them allocated and say this is how much we've got to spend, and then we'll come up with a percentage of how much each department would get based on the council's feelings, not just what staff says we need here. And it, so I do think that there's some, some difficulty and struggle that's going on amongst the council right now as far, that, that wouldn't be taking place if we were to have a retreat. And so, and of course now it's going to be after the fact because I think the budget is one of the most important things that we address during the year. And I'd a whole lot rather us not, not, not to decide exactly who gets how much money because that will be determined by how much revenue we're generating, but, but, but where that money's being spent, and, and I know that, I think all of us are having some difficulty, at least I'm having a lot of it, and I think some of you might be having minimal difficulty at, at the rate that the debt is growing and, and the fact that we're spending money basically that we're, I think we're all concerned with as far as, you know, the, the increase in budget, yes, we know we'll have increases because sales tax will probably grow as spending grows if the economy continues to grow. And, but there's a whole lot of ifs and buts in that that could throw the whole budget into a tailspin if, you know, if the economy doesn't do what we're hoping that it does. And, and as we know from the past, that it doesn't always do as we wish. So I, I just, I want to bring that point up in this meeting because I do think it's something that before the, the end of the meeting, it'll probably come back up again.
I would like just to go ahead, I mean, to be honest with you, I like to, while we're here, you know, it's hard coordinating seven people. I mean, I'm going to go ahead and look at it, would, would August the 17th work for everyone to have a, have a retreat? All right. So Mr. Lyons, August 17th, we're going to have a council retreat between now and then. We'll figure out a good location. I think we talked about maybe the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Conference area, and then we'll start working on an agenda. Is that good with everyone? Okay.
Mr. Smotherman had mentioned something that I, and I've had a couple of comments from the public about, you know, the solid waste fee that we're talking about and it is being a tax increase anyway. And, you know, we get tied to these ideas. It's been 17 years since we've had a tax increase and we tout that, and I, I don't know that it's time that we kind of lay that aside and, and label what, what it is, what it is, you know? And if, if there's another way of thinking about that, I'd like to hear some of my colleagues explain to me why that could not, I mean, we just shouldn't go on. I mean, we get so tied to this idea that we haven't had a tax increase in such a long time, but in fact, you know, people understand when we add a fee or we label it something else or we put it in another category, it really is a tax increase. And, 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 you know, I think it's almost a prideful thing that we, we haven't had a tax increase in so many years, and we get tied to that, and then all of a sudden we're not being honest, you know? And, and we're not being frank with the public as to what we're doing. Quite honestly, and the public right now, particularly when it relates to solid waste, are wondering, why did it take us so long to get here, to address the solid waste issue in our community and to do recycling? So maybe we need to just say, you know, call a spade a spade and, and move forward and not, and put it within our budget as opposed to a fee kind of thing. And we can collect it as a fee, but is there some other way of thinking that would help me with this or...
Bill, I think, go ahead. I should say, one of the things that, that might be a little different about this is that I, I think this is accurate, is that we have a lot of people who pay property taxes who also pay to have their waste removed, businesses.
Right.
And so this, the reason why I felt like this is not necessarily like what Mr. Rainwater was talking about is if you raise taxes, you raise that on everybody, of property taxes. Whereas this is a fee, this is actually going to be the people who are using the fee are the ones who's getting charged instead of getting everybody...
Yeah, property taxes are only applied to people who own property, though. I mean, so there is a certain amount of segment that wouldn't own property and wouldn't pay property tax, but, but I...
You see what I'm saying? There's a whole big bunch of people who pay a lot of their property taxes.
And I don't have a problem with having, calling it a fee, but, but I mean, we can't keep pounding our chests like Tarzan and, and pretending like we're not going up on the budget increases every year. The amount of spending goes up every year that we spend. The, the, the debt has continued to increase since I've been on the council, and, and I find it disturbing at the rate that it goes up, and sometimes I try to slow it down and I'm rarely successful. But the, the bigger truth of it is, is, you know, we do, you know, talking about trash in the landfill and what's going on at Middle Point is not something that just started in the last few weeks. It's when we put a dollar value and told people you might have to start paying something for a service that you've been receiving for, for, you know, so some would say it's free, some would say, you know, it's, it's in with their, part of their taxes. Yes, they are paying for it. It's not free. They've been paying for it. But the price is doubling, so if the price of gasoline were doubling, you wouldn't expect the business to eat it. They have to pass that cost along, and because the cost of landfill operation as far as our trash handling for the city is about to double, we're going to have to pass that cost along. There's no way that the city can just say, oh, we'll eat that because it's, you know, we're looking at what, $5 million increase just on the light side of it and potentially a $10 increase. But the, you know, it's, the landfill's filling up, and we've all known it's been filling up, and we've all been looking at options in recycling and the things that we could do to help that, but the fact that the city of Murfreesboro only contributes about 3% of the trash that goes into that landfill, it doesn't matter what we do recycle-wise or cut down on our garbage, the landfill's going to fill up on about the same exact date whether we do anything or not. So at the end of the day, we've got to come up with a plan of what we're going to do, and as soon as we assign the dollar value to it, I had people calling me saying, Eddie, you've lost your mind. You're, you're talking about a tax increase or a fee increase. Well, who's going to pay it if you don't? I mean, you know, is what I've told the people I've talked to because, you know, there, there is no, no magic pot up here that we rub and it just creates money in it. So we, we have to generate revenue to cover those expenses, and I think that for us to tell people that you're going to have to pay more for your trash pickup is just being honest with them at this point because there is, the cost of disposing of it's going to increase, the cost of transporting it's going to increase, and everything about that operation is going to increase. Now, you know, the question is whether or not we want to stay in the business or whether we want to potentially contract some of it out. I think that's a question that we've yet to answer because, you know, there's still a lot of study to be done on it. But at the end of the day, I, I agree that there's a, there's, there's an increase coming, and technically I think it probably should be a fee and add it on to anyone who is an electric user or water user so that it gets passed on directly to that person. And then, of course, if you're in an apartment complex where you have a compactor or you have a neighborhood who has a dumpster or something like that, you could be exempted from the, the fee because you're obviously not using that service. I don't know if that's a good idea or a bad idea because, I mean, traditionally, you know, neighborhoods have, we've kind of all been in this together, and if we have a stormwater fee, we'll assume that somehow there's some relationship to the quality of life in Murfreesboro being improved by stormwater. And if the stormwater improves, it improves for everybody, and if we improve our recycling situation for the city of Murfreesboro or we improve our disposal of trash for the city of Murfreesboro, I assume it's good for everybody, so.
I guess one comment, I'd just like to have this off, this monkey of this continually having a consecutive years of not a tax increase, I'd like to have that monkey off the back of the people that are trying to put a budget together so that they can feel, I mean, we don't have to have, we don't have to have all this. It's great that we did it when we did it and that we were able to maintain it, and hopefully, you know, we're going to operate in a, I, I will continue to operate in a very sound financial manner, but it seems just unrealistic to say, you know, at some point in time, I, I don't know what the financial conditions will be, but that streak like, you know, Lou Gehrig, it had, that streak had to be broken. And it seems like, maybe it's wrong, but I feel like it's almost an oppressive thing that we, a load we have put on our backs to say we've, these consecutive years of no tax increase and, and it's a, and it's a burden rather than really something that we should, should be, you know, carrying forward.
It's really based on growth and sales tax revenue generation.
Right. Well, every four years, even the appraisals, you know, require, there's, there's a, there's an increase in people's bill because of appraisal.
Remember, and I, the city...
Well, the rate's adjusted, so...
Well, yeah, I was going to say, remember that on the city property tax, if the appraisal rate goes up, our tax, our dollar amount that our tax rate goes down. So unless you've, you know, added on to your home or you've done something, you know, theoretically your tax rate with the city could be the same for the last 18 years.
When I began my career with the city, our tax rate was $2.30. It's now $1.20. It's come down that much because of the, the growth in the base.
The, the solid waste fee, I think Councilman LaLance brings up a good point, and a point that I hadn't even thought about is, you know, apartment dwellers. You know, whenever we started looking at this a couple of years ago, it became evident that this issue is not going to go away, and it's been just sort of kicked down, the cans has been kicked down the road. And so, I mean, I think what the goal needs to be, and I'm not saying that even a $5 fee is the fee, I mean, you know, you look at where Water and Sewer started almost five years ago with Darren, where they did a cost of study and we were giving water away. And it took us several years, but we got it to where there is no minimum on water that you get for free. You have to pay for what you use. And I think that's going to have to be the same way with solid waste. It's going to have to be treated to where we look at it as a utility. It's, it's a service that someone's getting that, and so that way it's run like Murfreesboro Electric, it's run like Murfreesboro Water and Sewer where you look and you say, okay, it's $5.5 million to pick the trash up, and here's what it costs to, to maintain that service, and here's what your fee is. There's no way, I don't think, right now that you could, I think our budget's five point, is it 5.4 million? Rob, it's five, five points something.
Yeah, I think that's real close.
So if you, you know, if you figure that by 45,000 households...
Twenty-five.
About $10 per household.
Yes, $10 a month is what we're...
A lot more now.
No, I think it's 44,000 is what we pick up right now.
But we're expecting a million three out of this in a, in a year at $5?
We only budgeted for half a year. We've got the mechanics of setting up...
Nah, that's why, okay, that's why. I thought it was $20.
So, you know, I think that, I mean, that's something I had even talked to Mr. Lyons about, and I'm not trying to take more money away from the budget. I mean, I don't know whether it's to say you do it all at one time and, and say this is where it's going to be, or you gradually do like Water and Sewer and you say, okay, it's $2, $3, $4, $5, and you gradually increase that, but I'm not sure what the, what the thought process is, but, you know, and I, this is not, privatization may be something that we have to look at in four or five years when this goes away. I'm not saying that we want to get rid of solid waste within the city, but, I mean, I think every option that we have is going to have to be on the table in whatever's the best for the, for taxpayers.
Somewhere along the lines, when this first came out, I, I thought I read an email or had some sort of literature that I read from staff that, that this was going to be set up as sort of a separate entity, but it's in the general fund, which means it kind of gets, I mean, is there any, I guess the question that I have is, is there anything where, that, that says this money stays within solid waste?
It's only a portion of, of the solid waste budget, which is still in the general fund. I think eventually you would look to have an enterprise fund where you would have all of the utility fees for solid waste collected along with all of the expense. But for right now, the solid waste department and all its expenses are parked in the general fund, so revenue is there as well. You'd be making a transfer, if you set it up that way, you'd have to make a transfer from the general fund for the difference. There is no other revenue source for solid waste right now?
Yeah, my, I mean, you know, my gut feeling on it is, is that I'm, you know, that if we're going to charge that fee, my gut feeling is that it should be dedicated to solid waste. I mean, you know, and, and whether that's trying to get a head start now on what ultimately is coming five years from now because the reality is, yes, we pay money, but, you know, we also don't, you know, have that full cost that we're going to have five years from now. Right? I mean, is that...
Well, the solid waste budget for this upcoming year is about $5 million. So this is a very small percentage of that. Usually the enterprise fund is self-funded. You're, you're charging enough to cover your cost. So we're a pretty long way from there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a great point. At some point, you know, whether we have, right now we don't have a solid waste board, you know, we don't, within the city, which I know, I was telling Mr. Lyons, I think out of any complaints that we get, solid waste is, is right up there on brush removal and, and those things. So, you know, it may be something that as we start studying this and with the consultants who are coming in to give us guidance, that there may end up being a, a solid waste commission that says, just like they're running this.
And Mr. Carmely met with representatives from Rutherford County this week and to talk about the RFP and selecting the consultant, so that works continuing, but we're still actively working on that. I'm not sure the date to...
The first of the two finalists consulting firms is Tuesday of next week. The second firm will be here on the 17th of the month. But all of these things you talked about in terms of looking at how we collect, what we collect, should we recycle, should we not recycle, all those things that you've mentioned so far are included in that scope of the consultant study.
When are we looking at beginning collection? You said a half a year. When, what, what are...
I've had a preliminary conversation with MED. Their billing system is the most flexible. Their customer base overlaps our solid waste collection best, but it's been a very cursory conversation. Long way to go figuring out how to set up their billing system, unload 44,000 data points of cans into their system and get billed. There's a lot of manual labor to go.
So at least six to eight months?
Six months.
Six, eight months, okay. Bill, you bring up a good point, though. I mean, I've spoke to several different groups and said we haven't raised taxes for 18 years and, and, you know, it's almost a product of your own success that you're trying to get, so you bring up a good point.
Mayor, if I can come back to the retreat date, I was looking at September and staff has emailed me since you said that that is a planning commission day meeting for Mr. Young and Mr. Smotherman, August 17.
August 17.
I didn't have that on my calendar, so Mr. Smotherman and Mr. Young would have a planning commission meeting at that same time.
How about this, sometime that week, fine, because I think everyone, by the, by tomorrow, let's have a date nailed down.
Yes, sir.
Unless you guys want to move it the day before that.
We can send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Tuesdays are usually pretty good days for everybody.
Okay, all right, so we have the, we've talked about the solid waste fee. I think we need to talk about the, we had a discussion on the, on pay increases.
Well, I, I presented my idea when we were talking about the budget, and I think it went over about as well as the chicken wire canoe. So I, I guess we're at the point now that we need to try and decide if there's any, you know, any way that we can work with the bottom and try and improve the amount of pay that we're giving, or if you guys want to present it as the flat 2% is, is in the budget, that's fine, and I think Rick may have worked on something that involves... may have worked on something that involves insurance here that, that, that might fly too. I don't know.
Can we do that?
I wish you luck.
Mr. L. Lance, it might be helpful, Mr. Godwin, to talk about how we look at our insurance pricing. We've got a consultant, Callen, that does a great deal of analysis about how our insurance rates are set up. I want to give you that as kind of background because it is, it is quite extensive. We met a number of times to try to look at the data, look at the trends so that the insurance funds still.
Well, so, before we get into that, the question is not how did we come up with the 4% increase. The question is, can we have a different increase for one section of employees than we have for the other employees? That's, that's the question that I have.
I'm not sure it's legal.
I don't either.
Yeah.
I don't know why it wouldn't be, but.
I have not looked at that issue at all. So I, sorry, I can't give you an opinion on that. It's something that certainly we can look at over the next few days and, and do our best to give you an opinion on that, but I certainly can't do it tonight.
Let's hear about the.
Mr. Allen?
Mayor and members of council, I would be glad to check with our benefits consultant, Cowan Benefits of Franklin. It's my instinctive belief that it is not something that the city would normally do. Whether it's legal or not, I think is probably the city attorney's question. But I do think that the difficulty lies in the data and the privacy of the information with respect to those employee groups. We are self-funded and clearly those costs pass through the city based on the actual claims experience. And so the, the trajectory of our increase this year by Cowan was actually 7%. That's what they brought to us in the preliminary discussions. And based on further discussions with staff, including human resources, finance, and the city manager's office, we, we of course, look at these things with respect to what the city employee will actually feel, because it is an important consideration. Not only the city employees who are active, but also the retirees. And so we, we pay close attention and careful attention to all those groups with respect to what we might want to do. And in talking with Cowan and talking with finance and the city manager's office, we felt that a 4% increase, although below their recommended suggested increase of 7%, met those objectives. The other thing that 4% does, and I think there was a question as to whether a city employee would go backward. Ms. Harris brought up that question. It's, it's a very important question. It is also one that in 30-plus years in human resources, I think most every organization faces, do our employees really go backwards when comparing those costs on an annual basis? Right now, there are eight different categories of insurance premiums that employees can participate in. And all eight categories with the proposed 4% increase of insurance premiums and 2% increase for across-the-board increase for salaries would result in the employee's take-home being a net increase. So there is no decrease to employees in their net, if you will, if the proposal that's currently been made is, is, is approved. Clearly, there's a number of things that our city employees could take advantage of that we will do on an annual basis and continue to do with respect to things like our wellness benefit that's upcoming for bid, as well as our flexible spending benefits, which are pre-tax savings plans. And we'll continue to make sure that those messages get out so that those who are getting closer based on the, the plan choice that they make can save every possible way that the city makes available to them. But again, in the, in the big scheme of things with respect to what we looked at before we made the proposal, this was something that was in front of us, and we, we made that recommendation to Mr. Lyons. Again, we didn't choose to go with the consultant's higher rate, but that would be based on nationwide plan experience too. When the consultants came back to us, right now, those, those self-funded plans are probably going to average between 11% and 12%. I know Rutherford County is proposing an average of a 6% increase for its plan this year. So that in conjunction with a 1.75% pay increase would give you a bit of a, a reference point to consider.
So my math, you know, I just did a little math here. You're looking back at those same ranges that Eddie used, the 0 to 35,000, 35 to 70, and 70 and above. Basically, a 4% increase in insurance premiums amounts to be about a, right around about a 10th of a percent of someone's salary who's in that 100,000 or above, those few people that are over 100,000. That's what it costs them into their salary, whereas you're talking about roughly about a half a percent of their salary for those people at $35,000. Okay? So, yeah, they're, you're, they're going forward. They're getting a 2%, but they're losing a half a percent. So a net basis, they're going up by 1 and 1/2%. The people over 100,000 are going up by about 1.9%. Okay? You understand the increase in insurance is a, is a fixed dollar amount. So it has a more significant impact on the lower end of the scale. Someone who's making $35,000 gets hurt a lot worse by a $250 insurance premium per month. Okay? That, that number goes to, to 290 or whatever. That extra 40 bucks hurts that person a lot more than it hurts the person up here. It's not the same as giving them more money, but yes, it's true they're not going backwards, but they, it is also true mathematically that they are not going as forward. Do you agree with that, Mr. Godwin?
I think mathematically, that's correct. I would also say, and I believe it came up, Mr. L. Lance, earlier that, you know, we certainly want to be mindful of what the employees in the lowest salary classification make with respect to what their premiums are. The average city employee's annual budgeted salary is $46,700. That's before benefits, of course, which are another 52% of the average annual salary. But we did look at the comparison of the lowest eligible full-time city employee, you know, based on the highest category of health insurance cost for monthly premium in the PPO plan. There is about a $15 per month net positive difference to that employee with those two comparisons. And again, that's the lowest paid city employee, and there's 20, 21 different classification ranges, but that would be an employee who is making $11.55 an hour.
Now, here, what about, what if we raised the salary from 2% to 3% across the board for everybody?
How much is that?
About $400 and some odd thousand dollars.
I think that.
If it's $900,000 to 2%.
I think Ms. Stovall might have estimated that, and it's right. Do you happen to have that information?
Not having it for me, it's about $640,000 difference from what's already in the budget, but that's including all of the benefits that go along with that.
Yeah. If it's $900,000 or something for.
How much is it for 2%? For the 2% raise we're talking about? We can figure this out.
It's already in the budget or?
Yeah, it was $940,000, wasn't it?
It's about $950,000.
Something like that?
$950,000.
So wouldn't 1% be half of what 2% is? I mean, y'all are losing me bad here.
I don't disagree. I apologize, but my employee's not here tonight, and so that's what she sent out, and she worked it up on her spreadsheet. So I'm, I'm not sure how she got to her numbers, but that's what she had sent us yesterday before she left.
Somewhere between $450,000 to $600,000, it's the same.
Yeah, in the big picture of the budget, that's close.
I think I'll make a motion to do that.
We got to borrow the money to do it.
But y'all are the ones that want to go 4%.
But I'm not forgiving anybody who's making above $75,000 3%.
I don't, I don't think that's legal, Eddie. I don't think that's legal. I think that's discriminatory. Now, we may do it as a council, but I don't think it's going to last.
Well.
I'm not in favor of doing the range thing. Okay? I mean, I, I think that the.
Yeah. I don't think I got to vote, so that's the reason I'm not making a motion.
I'm not in favor of doing the range thing, okay, with, with salaries. What I'm, what I'm talking about with this insurance thing is, you know, maybe that's some way to approach it. And again, here we are trying to figure this all out, you know?
You would not believe the bills I give.
Oh, you want to see mine?
Yeah. Between her and I, I bet we spent a million dollars this year on insurance.
I'm taking up a collection.
And that 4%, to guarantee that they get the protection they need is priceless. So I'd rather skimp on something else, but let's make sure that our employees are covered by the best insurance that we can afford to give them. It's more important to me than a salary increase because.
With it.
The largest reason of bankruptcy in the United States is medical bills.
I agree. I'm not, I don't, I'm not taking anything away. I'm giving it away.
Well, you know, I just think we need to hold firm on the, on the insurance, and I'll make a motion that we increase the salary range from 2% to 3% across the board. I may die in the, in your chicken wire canoe with you, Eddie, but that's what I'm going to make a motion that, or for. And it's going to die for lack of a second.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I think, I think what I would like to do is to see if there are some alternatives. I'm, I'm considerate of the fact that insurance certainly is important, but maybe we need to have that question answered before we, you know.
Clarify what I'm talking about. If you're, if you're thinking at all that I have anything, all I'm talking about is giving it away, no, no 4% increase to the people making $35,000 or less. They don't get the 4% increase. They still get the updated insurance. Not taking anything away.
He's still giving them a 2% raise and taking away the 4% insurance.
They don't have to pay for the insurance at 35 or?
They don't have to pay for the increase.
Okay.
So the 4% increase to their.
The city would be paying for it, which.
That's right.
We've got an insurance fund, and I think part of what, for that idea would come to a vote, I would ask, you really need to give staff time to analyze it.
That's all I asked for. I just wanted to make sure that y'all know what I was even talking about.
We kept, yeah, of course, last year we did not have a health insurance rating, premium increase. There's shares of the 4%, but that insurance fund, we try to make stand on its own. So if you didn't include the funding for part of the employees, the insurance fund would be then short. So we would need to find a way to make up the money somewhere else.
Really, I mean, so just, so really what you'd be doing, and this is where, tell me if I'm wrong on this, Rick.
Okay.
You're really going to have to look to make sure that if you, if you've got, say, 10 people or 11 people who are in the $100,000 and up range, and say you have 80, I forget what the number was that Glenn had that.
71.
So if you've got more people, you may have to take more. It may be a 6% or 7% increase on some, because if.
Self-insured.
Depending on what the, the figure comes out, you may end up short.
Well, that couldn't be right, because we'd have to do 7% if that was the case.
That's what I'm saying.
What they're, what they recommended to us. So we're, the city's eating some of it.
Well, but if you've got more people who are, say, if you did it in a range, if you've got more people who are 35 and below, and you're giving that portion away, you're going to have to make that up on the other group somewhere.
Maybe, yeah, I don't know, man. I'm, I'm, that's what I'm saying, this is.
Is that right?
That, that is true. Additional, additional considerations would be the manual labor you're going to be adding to the HR department, because they're going to have to develop so many different tables for insurance based on salary, and it's 80/20, so it's not just one premium. You've got to divide everything between the city portion and the cit, and the employee portion. So they were going to have to go in and do that per employee based on their salary, and I think that'd be very manual.
All right. So how much is the 4% increase in insurance going to bring the city, from the employees? How much, what's the dollar amount?
I got to say.
It's in here from the insurance or not?
Why don't we just not?
Yeah.
It's going to cost us a lot more to do a 1% increase than it would to just scratch the increase on the insurance.
But it's less money in their pocket.
No, no, no.
No, no, it's not.
Now, actually, nobody's going back.
They don't have to pay the 4%.
But we would also, we would also take care of what Mr. Smother was talking about, because the, when you talk about, you know, whether you want to call it a disparate impact or not.
That's the nicest name I've been called all night.
Mr. Smother, oh, but wait, there's more.
Oh, okay.
There's not, I was looking at Ms. Russell's letter to see if she had that detailed out. I don't have that information with me here, so I'm not sure.
So I think.
Broken down by employee and employer.
Not Mr. Smother, but Mr. L. Lance.
That's the nicest name I've been called all night.
So if we can find out what that amount is, that the insurance is increasing, and if we know, we know what the amount of a 1% increase would be, so you're saying maybe do one or the other?
The idea is a 4% increase on health insurance premiums does impact the lower end more than it does the higher end. We all agree on that, right? So if we have a concern that we are trying to impact the lower end less, or trying to give them a little leg up, then maybe instead of doing it as ranges and a salary increases, they get more of a salary increase.
We absorb help.
Everybody gets the salary increase, but we don't, but we, I mean, nobody, we get the 2% salary increase, so everybody goes up on percentage, but they don't get the higher impact of the fixed fee of insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Is that, if we, if, I mean, I'm not saying that's what everybody thinks.
And I think your benefit would be adjusted then according to what kind of insurance you have and what benefit, you know, so it, that would really vary by individual.
It would vary, but there's a, it's going to be a fixed number, whatever you choose.
Does that make sense to you, Mr. Lyons?
And Mr. Smother was just, you know, mentioning, you know, we've got a PPO and an HRA. We can, you can pick employee coverage, employee and spouse, employee and children, and family in each of those plans. So there's eight flavors of this. So that's why I was trying to understand.
How much is a family PPO, the employee family PPO monthly premium?
And I'll, I'll get you, all of you a spreadsheet with all of this. You said a, a PPO family is.
Employee.
It's $395.
Okay.
All right, so 400 bucks, a 4% increase.
$16.
16 bucks a month. So 16 bucks a month.
$200.
It's 200 bucks a year. 200 bucks a year is certainly more to someone who is paying that $396, making $35,000 than the same, the same person who's making 100,000 pays the same $396, correct? If they have the same PPO family.
That is true. One of the things that Council wanted to do back in 2013 was to attract and retain employees based on total compensation. And so to Mr. L. Lance's point, health insurance is clearly one of those things to remain competitive as well as salary, but the other cadre of benefits are also important. But I think being able to stratify health insurance premiums based on annual earnings would, would likely put our carrier into a position of difficulty, not only our consultant in terms of being able to estimate future plan costs, because that's a moving target for the city. Our, our salaries change. They're very fluid from year to year based on your decisions. And so I, I see additional complexities coming in the review. I'm glad to go back and look, but I, I'm not aware of, of another plan that operates this way.
That operates what way?
Stratifying decisions on increases based on annual earnings for health insurance premiums.
No, I mean, I'm saying if we just scratched the increase completely, I mean, we, we certainly make that decision pretty much every year, don't we?
I, I am familiar with some plans, for example, that for single coverage only, there's no premium, but, but, but those are generally identified by class and not earnings.
Not sure he understands the question.
No premium, no.
I think what he's saying is whatever the cost is, we were, we were putting 4% in the insurance cost to our budget this year.
Yes.
What Mr. L. Lance is saying is that the city would absorb that additional cost.
And not do.
And not pass along the 4%.
No premium increase whatsoever.
Not pass along the 4%.
I understand.
Instead of doing a 3% increase, like's been proposed, we would stay at a 2% increase, but we would absorb what the, the increased premium cost would be. So that way.
Sorry, I understand what you're saying.
That way, that absorbed premium cost is going to help someone who's a family and making.
Yes.
$35,000 a year.
Sorry, forgive me. I understand what you're saying now.
The question is, how much did our healthcare go up? How much is the, how much is the increase? That's the, that would be the number.
Yeah. Are we going to be absorbing $3 million of, at 4% per person or per family versus 600,000 by giving the 3%? I would think it was less, but.
Well, we, we do know that 7% was projected by Cowan, and it's a $16 million spend. So those are based on what they, they look backward. There's a 24-month back and forward period. So we know for the total cost of the plan, it's, it's approximately 7% of 16 million.
What it sounds to me like you would be doing is you would no longer have the 80/20 split. And that's what we've been doing is the 80/20. We, they come up with a premium, and the city pays 80, and the employee pays 20. So if you come up with, here's So, if you come up with, here's the premium, you would no longer be able to do that 80/20, it would be the employee stays where they are, and the employer goes up, and that percentage does change.
Yes, that could possibly be, which is...
Also, when the budgeting was done for the insurance fund, we used more conservative numbers as revenue than what is used in the departments. The departments use it based on positions and positions being filled. On the insurance fund, I suggested numbers for revenue that are more conservative, assuming those positions aren't filled, and that will have expenditures and fund balance may be used to be prepared for less revenue. So, there's not a, there's not a direct, a direct relation to the, because you, I feel this way anyway, you should budget conservatively. You should budget your expenditures expecting this is gonna be the case, and you budget your revenues assuming they won't come in as high as you hope. And in that way, you can, you know how much of your fund balance you may have to use to cover if, not necessarily the worst case, but not the best case happens. So, when we look at the insurance fund, and you add up the revenues from the employer, they're not gonna directly match what's in the budget for the general fund, because I'm assuming all those vacancies won't be filled, people are gonna leave, people are gonna choose not to have insurance.
But to get us a decent, I mean, a decent range, I mean, if we, if we say it's a $16 million total spend, right? 20% of that is 3.2 million. We'd be getting 4% of that amount then, basically. If 3.2 million is what the employees spend of the 16 million, and we're increasing them by 4%, then the number that we're looking at absorbing here is 128,000 bucks. Correct? I mean, that's, it's not obviously that exact number, but it's gonna be somewhere in the 128, $140,000 range, which is probably good enough for our decision-making. Does that, does that make sense?
Now, is that for everybody?
I think so.
Across the board?
Well, if it's 16 million total spend, that's, I think that is everybody.
Yeah, if employees contributing 20% of that spend, that would be, that would be close.
So, basically, what we're doing is saying...
Picking up the insurance premium increase.
Which is, I think...
Across the board.
Best I can figure, it's gonna be 120, $135,000.
I have some problems with that. Will our insurance carrier, will that cause, we're not gonna do it by range, or so...
Oh, no, there's not.
No.
We've already solved that problem.
It's just us paying it instead of the employees paying it. That's, that's all. I mean, they're getting the same coverage, same policy, same everything. It's just us paying.
But we don't have that exact number tonight.
But if you did that, wouldn't everybody wanna go to the more expensive range insurance and start jumping their insurance?
It's only 4% on top of that, so it wouldn't be a reason for them to go to 395 from 250.
Then last year, we absorbed the increase last year.
Yeah.
We did, but remember that Cowan came to us to look back 12 months and look ahead 12 with the 7% increase recommended. And we don't typically have a standard of how many reserves to keep on hand for years where we have an excessive amount of claims, it's where self-funded, or self-insured. The other piece of that is stop-loss. And stop-loss insurance, of course, at this particular point in time is revised on an annual basis, based on previous 12 months' history. We've been fortunate in the last two years to not have any excessive claims to speak of, but that's no guarantee. And so, I think that, again, as Ms. Rice said, we were, we were looking at this from a very conservative point of view, to say, if we recommend no increase, and we do have a negative year with respect to large claims, which can be somewhat offset by the carrier and the stop-loss policy that's in place, that's really separate from the current self-insured plan. We can absorb that, but that is no guarantee. And so, I think the 7%, as it was recommended by Cowan in their mind, was conservative. So, we even went below that based on where we felt that the insurance fund stood.
Do we think the 120,000 number is appropriate?
Yeah, that's probably pretty close. I'm not really sure how we would, how we would do it.
It's close.
But it's probably pretty close. As far as functionally, I don't know how we would do it.
To stay within the 80/20 policy you come out? Yeah, so we may.
Now, if you, if you're against having a rate increase, you know, the other option is, instead of trying to tie it to salaries, because I agree with Mr. Godwin, I just can't imagine, number one, just how hard that will be for us to administer, but I don't know of any other plans like that. And I'm speaking without talking to the city manager, but if that's the direction you're going, and you want the city, I'm just answering your, your point. If that's the direction you're going, and you want the city to do that, I would either not have a tax increase, oh, tax increase, a rate increase, and let the city fund balance of the insurance fund, see if it can handle it. I do believe it'd mean you'll have a bigger rate increase next year, and you probably won't be able to avoid it unless the city pays it. Or the city can inject money into the insurance fund, straight out of the general fund, as a, not as a percentage change, but just as an influx of money, a transfer straight over. I mean, those are things you can consider. Again, I haven't talked to the city manager about that, but I think that would be easier for HR to administer. I do think it will be very, very difficult to try to do it per person on a salary.
I'm off of that.
But you know, in my conversation with firefighters, and I'm not trying to go back to my, my plan, which Doug has deemed illegal, but the ruling's in. But the, my intentions of this whole thing is retention of employees, because we continually train firefighters at academies, and they go to other departments, and we train firefighters, and we get them up to snuff, and they go to other departments because they can make a little more money there. And I haven't, in my conversations with them, none of them said they were concerned about their insurance nearly as much as they said, help that guy out at the bottom to get his pay up quicker so that he can make more money early on in his career, which will help him in the long run, but it will also help retain those employees that we're losing, because you're bringing that bottom up a little higher, and that's, you know, I'm starting to sound like I got passion for it, and again, it doesn't affect me one dime one way or the other, but, but, but I do think that, you know, I was quoted in the paper the other day of saying, I'm concerned about people who take showers after work more than I am those who take showers before work. And I think that's because these guys who are out here on these brush trucks, these guys who are riding these garbage trucks, these guys who are out here digging ditches and climbing poles, their work is just as important as the person at the top. And to say that the person at the top deserves a $3,500 raise, and the person at the bottom deserves a $500 raise, I don't buy it. I'm sorry, I just can't buy into any, you know, I know from an HR standpoint, you'd say, well, that's not easy to do. Well, I'm not saying it's easy to do. I'm saying, I'm trying to get money in the people's pockets so that we can retain our employees who are at the lowest level that we're losing, and they're going somewhere else for more money after we've trained them.
That's, not to throw more fuel on the fire, but eventually, we're gonna have to look again at this pay study too, because in my findings, I'm finding that you take an employee that's been here 10 years, we are hiring people coming in that's been here less than 10 years, and the people that have been here 10 years are not even at the medium point, and people that are walking in the door coming here, less than 10 years, are making more than people that have been here 10 years. And I can give you some examples of that. So, it's just something we just have to take a look at. With the new pay study, that's, that's where we are. I've seen some figures, and, you know, you're talking about retaining, it's just not the fire and police, you're talking about fleet services. You have the people, we are training these people, they're getting, getting their CDC license, and they are leaving us, going somewhere else with those licenses, making more money, even the next county. So, you know...
And, and you know, you mentioned the pay study, Madeline, I mean, you know, we're not losing our employees to the people that we compared ourselves to in the pay study. We're not losing people to Athens, Georgia, and Greenville, South Carolina. We're losing people to Franklin, and Smyrna, and Lebanon. I mean, that's where these guys are going, that they're making more money, in Metro. I mean, it's, it's not, you know, I just, in the pay study, somewhere we missed something at the bottom, because every one of them are saying they're getting more money by going to these other departments that are local departments.
Can I, can I make one?
I'd like to speak to, and I think she makes a very good point, is what does the data say about why people are leaving, and for what purposes are they leaving? Council made some important decisions last August when it made two policy changes. One of those is Section 5003, deals with the new policy or the new program. One of the things that council required is that every three years, there would be a market study, and so, we're planning on doing that in 2018. But in the meantime, every year, this year's budget also includes something that hasn't been talked about as much, and that's an ECI index, which is an economic consumer index. And the recommendation is to move that by 2%, and that moves the entire structure 2% richer, so the employees who are at the minimum would move by 2. But importantly, those employees that council talked about last year for us to keep our eye on, Mr. Lelance and I have talked about this, would also move by 2% and are no longer topped out. So, that's an annual review that the study brought to us, and as a council, you charged us with that responsibility to watch that, and that is included.
And, you know, I wanna try to take a data-driven...
Can I add one thing real quick?
Yes, sir.
And Eddie, you and I, we agree on more than we disagree. You know, we're, we're talking about the assumption that, you know, we talk about the people who leave, and, you know, having a small business, you're always gonna have people who are gonna search for places where the grass is greener on the other side. That's just part of it. And, and you look at where we are as a, as a city, that, you know, we're lead, we've led the state in pay increases, you've got a very rich healthcare plan, that from someone that's in the small business sector, it's better than 90% of the people in this community have in healthcare. So, you look at vacation time, you look at sick time, you look at comp time. So, you know, I want us to be careful that we're saying that this is not a, that we don't have a good benefit package and a good place to work, because, you know, if someone wants to go to Nashville, and they get a better offer in Nashville, and they wanna drive 45 minutes in traffic every day, and work at a government that is twice or three times the size of what Murfreesboro is, then I think what you'll see, the council members are not having the conversations that we're having about our employees, because they can't do that, they're too big. So, you know, my thought is, you know, we've gone through a pay study, we've paid our people well, you know, how many people do we have just apply for the fire positions?
About 800.
I mean, I had a bunch of people applying for a fire position, so, you know, I, I look at the same time as what we're, how we're doing for our employees, and I value every one of them. The guy who's on the garbage truck, to the person who is working GIS, you value every individual. But at the same time, if we're trying to chase a rabbit to say, how do we make it better, 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 at some point, you're looking at it, and you're going, this is 95% better than the residents of Murfreesboro. And so, we have to be cognizant about that at the same time, because the residents are the ones who are paying for this.
So, we had a motion that was to give the increase to 3%, and I didn't hear a second. And we think that that motion was gonna cost us somewhere between 450 and $600,000, okay? We've also had some discussion about what could we possibly do for the lower end, and I think what we decided was that, or what they told us was that by us absorbing that insurance cost, that would cost us somewhere around $130,000. And that that would have a little better impact, the people at the lower end of the scale would be benefited a little bit more than the people at the higher end of the scale. Do we, is that all appropriate, is that all accurate information so far?
I don't think it is, because he's told us that nobody's going backwards, that the pay increase, the 2% is more dollars in your pocket than the 4% increase in the healthcare.
That's true, but see, but what you end up netting out, out of that 2%, if you're making $150,000, you're still netting 1.93% of that 2%. Whereas if you're making $30,000, you're only netting out 1.5% of that 2%. You see what I'm saying?
The fixed number of insurance.
She's got someone who's making $30,000 a year, and we're giving them a 2% pay increase, so they're getting $900, and if their, if their healthcare goes up...
400, $15 a month.
15, so their healthcare goes up $200, so they're only gonna net a $400 increase. But if we, if we still paid that 2%, and instead of giving a 3%, we ate the healthcare, that $160,000, then they're actually keeping more money in their pocket. So, we're...
It's just like this, a $15 a month is gonna hurt, an extra 15 bucks a month is gonna hurt the guy making $30,000 worse than it's gonna hurt the guy making 120.
I think that's legal.
Yeah, I do too, for us to absorb it.
I think that's legal, and I don't think, you know, I don't recall anybody as socialist, but you know, if you start robbing from the rich and giving to the poor, the people that, that earn the top dollars have 25 years' experience, you know, college degrees, master's degrees, engineering degrees.
Yeah, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be doing the range stuff, I mean...
I think we gotta stay away from the range.
So, Glenn, you guys, you and Melissa, that's right, y'all mentioned that, you know, they're, they're recommending us the 7%, we're going with the 4, and that there's some risk that we may go over because we're being conservative, but if we're talking about potentially spending $600,000 for a pay increase, and instead, we do this and absorb the, the insurance cost, and we end up going over by the amount that the insurance cost would have been, we still just gotta come up with $130,000 instead of $600,000, right? Am I...
I wanna make sure I understand, you do want the city side to go up 4%? You want the employee side not to go up at all? And then the city kick in any difference we need at the end of the year? Is that what you're suggesting? I just wanna make sure I understand.
My suggestion was basically that we absorb the employees' piece of the increase.
And so, the city keeps the 4, plus, it takes the whole, the whole 4% for both sides?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go away with the 80/20 split.
Yeah, it may end up being the city's paying 83%, and the, the employees paying 17%.
Well, the HRA is an 83/17 split. We try to incentivize people to the HRA, and it's been working, so it's not even 80/20. It's complicated.
It would have the second, I mean, but is that a policy, or...
Bill? I'm just a little concerned that, you know, we're throwing figures out, and I'm not sure I really understand or comprehend where we are in this, so I'm not, can we, can we not kinda not, I mean, we've gotta have at least two readings of this, right?
Yeah, I was just telling Doug the same thing.
Can, can we get something in paper and something, so we know what we're talking about? Because quite honestly, it's just, I feel like I'm talking to my insurance agent. I don't know what it's talking about half the time. And he says, sign this, and I sign something, and I don't really know what I've signed. So, so I, I think it's probably prudent for us to say, let's have something in writing, let's have something that, you know, generally talks about what has been proposed tonight, and then let us ask questions about it if we need to, and then, and then move forward.
So, how about Councilman Shackleton, how about this, if this is possible? Can you give us, if we did a 3% increase, how much that number is? Can you give us if we did a 2.5% increase, how much that number is? Can you give us the number if we did a, how much it would cost us to eat the additional insurance premium?
For the employee.
For the employee. And then that way, we've got, is there any other numbers we would need from that? So, that way, we would know how much it's gonna cost us, if we, even if we said we wanted to give a 2.5% increase, and we wanted to eat the insurance premium, we would know how much that's gonna cost us.
Be glad to.
And keep the 4% increase as the, as what we're shooting towards? I wanna make sure I understand.
Yeah, I think the, I think the goal, I think the goal would be for the employee, whatever they paid last year...
I understand, but the 4% recommended increase, with no increase going to the employee, you're still shooting for that 4% number.
We'll analyze it, we'll analyze it.
Yes and no. It could be if you, if you give a 2.5% raise and don't eat the insurance cost, so there's a lot of different variables that we could look at.
She's talking about the employee side versus the employer side.
With employer, yeah. Did you have a motion about chocolate? All right.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that, we'll try to turn the round as quickly as we can and get it to you, not necessarily wait till the, to the next council packet.
Okay.
Do you have extra time?
Are we meeting next week?
Yes. We are meeting next week?
We are? No meeting next week.
That's what I heard.
No meeting next week, but I'm gonna try to get, as soon as we can get the information turned around, I'm gonna send it to you, so you've got hopefully some additional time with the material. with the material.
Is there a reason why we're not meeting next week?
The Tennessee Art Commission is in town.
Oh, that's right.
We were trying to, we talked about that a while back to try to stay away from the meeting since we were the host.
16th, 23rd, and 30th, we still have, so three meetings.
All right.
So we need to kill that motion then.
No, it's had to die.
There's no second.
So, Mr. Lyons, since.
No, you kill me.
Since we are not, yeah, I know, will we be okay if we don't vote on the budget tonight and we tabled that or do we need?
Well, if you table it, we're gonna have to have another meeting in June, either on the 30th or a special call meeting.
We still got 16th and 23rd and 30th.
I mean, what you can do tonight is go ahead and pass the parts you're happy with and then the parts you're not sure you want to do, we can change those before second reading. We do that all the time.
But Ms. Wright, that would be passing everything and then an amendment to some part of it before second reading.
Take it away or change it.
Yeah, an amendment to either take the insurance away or give them a percentage as proposing the budget or increase that.
So if we already know that we're gonna meet on the 16th or 23rd and the 30th, would it be possible to not vote on the budget tonight? I see council members shaking their head. Can we, even if we have to have a special meeting that we, that we can get in with our ordinance appropriations?
I would definitely recommend that so you feel comfortable and not rushed, so.
Okay, yep. All right, so let's, council members.
Mayor, I don't believe there was ever a motion on the changes that the city manager had discussed early in the, you know, at our 5 o'clock meeting to incorporate those into the budget. Now, if you're not passing it on first reading, that may not be essential, those would get, I guess, put into the budget before it comes back to you for first, for first reading, but it would also be appropriate, I think, assuming you agree with those, to take action on that.
I guess, I would concur if the items in my memorandum, if we can get a motion of you're in support of those when we bring you the agenda on the 16th, it will already incorporate those changes.
Can we get a motion for that, please?
Some of.
Of a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
What were those changes? I mean, were we talking about?
Administrative changes.
The administrative changes.
Okay, I got you. Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, so just to recap, Mr. Lyons, to make sure we're all on the same page, you're gonna come back with the three or four different salary options that we have, the one or two different insurance options that we have.
Yes, sir.
If you need to talk with MAG or with Cowan to give, have any of, to make sure that what we're doing is appropriate and legal, then that would be great to have that information and preferably have that information sometime early to mid next week that we're not having to rush on it.
Understood.
Are you gonna go ahead and pull out the hotel motel tax too? I mean, will that be?
We've already done that.
You've already done that?
Mayor, there's two other items that weren't in the city manager's letter. I want to make sure it's all right with y'all if we include those, is raising the tree climber's salary to the full amount. And if you are interested in doing that homeless consultant that you all are aware of with, under Mr. Calo's guidance, and if you don't want to do that one, that's fine. I just want to get an idea of what you do want so we can go ahead and put that in so you don't have to talk about it again next meeting.
I'll make a motion that we raise the amount as appropriated for the, or as suggested for the tree climber.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Okay, so we're gonna forego item 10, item.
What about the money for the?
Is that, do you want to do the homeless?
I'm gonna suggest that we talk to Mr. Calo and see if that, how that, how that, whether that can come under that department or whether it be an outside agency, since it's kind of a hybrid proposal, talking about the count. So we can defer that, yeah. We can defer that.
Yes, Chocolate. Santa Claus.
Okay, so if there are any additional items that, whether it's salary, insurance, let's, to make sure that we're not up here with our calculators going crazy, let's send those to Mr. Lyons and we'll make sure that we're not, not missing anything. Rule number one is don't go broke and rule number two is to stay out of jail and we'd like to do both of those. Okay, so we're gonna forego 10, 11, and 12. Am I missing anything else, council members?
Did we do nine?
Well, we've gotten any changes to the proposed 2016, 2000 city of Murfreesboro budget, including the city manager's salary, but I think we may want, before we discuss the city manager's salary, to find out what we're gonna do with the other salary scenarios and discuss that then.
I was just looking here at what the governor of the state of Tennessee makes. He makes $1,000 or $178,000 a year. Rob's almost closing in on that number. I would make the motion that Rob's salary stay where it currently is.
He has a purpose.
Yeah, he also returns, turns down the salary. Him and the governor of Florida, I think, both turn them down.
All right.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see where we end up, on what we end up with everybody, doing with everybody and then, and I'm.
Traditionally, that's what we've always done, really. We've been, see where we are and then act on his. But then, why should you discriminate against him?
I'm just in favor of discrimination, apparently. Everything I've done tonight's been illegal. I'm assuming it'd be legal if I made that motion, so I'll take it back.
All right, so we will consider Mr. Lyons, the city manager's salary, once we get these other, other items back. So we've got, again, foregoing item 9, 10, 11, we're gonna forego item 12. And now we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer regarding contract with Hudson Steel Engineering for design of Kingdom Ridge, Kingdom Drive Bridge.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We're excited about the item we have for you tonight. It is a contract for the design of a bridge over Overall Creek as part of Kingdom Drive and the Kingdom Ridge subdivision. In 2012, the Overall Creek Elementary School was proposed near Veterans Parkway and State Route 96. At that time, a bridge over Overall Creek to the east was suggested as a potential improvement to the east-west transportation routes in the area. The city and the developer of the Kingdom Ridge subdivision discussed and agreed that adding a bridge at this location was desirable. Subsequently, the developer revised the master plan for the subdivision and a bridge at this location was added to the city's recent capital improvement plan. I've included a site plan with the proposed location. The new bridge, in conjunction with the roadway constructed as part of the Kingdom Ridge development, will allow for vehicular and pedestrian traffic between Veterans Parkway and Rucker Lane. The northern portion of the bridge will also contain a 10-foot-wide divided area for sidewalks for students and parents that may be wanting to walk to Overall Creek Elementary School. The contract with Hudson Steel for survey and design of the bridge was requested and is attached for your review. The contract is based on timing materials with an uptick seat amount of $125,000 with funding from the recent bond issue. Staff recommends approval of the design contract with Hudson Steel. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the engineer, city engineer?
I think we'll wait until the mayor gets back. If there are no questions, I move we approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
I'm gonna pass because I didn't get to hear the presentation, so I assume Mr. Griffith never steers us wrong, but.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll now consider recommendations of the city recorder, finance director with regards to updates of our financial policies.
Mayor, tonight, I'm presenting again the financial policies that was before you about a month ago. We've had budget in between and I was able to get back to this. Last time this was presented, it was requested that you get the TCA, which had the authorized investments. Both the city's financial advisor and the investment advisor have recommended that we change our financial policies to include TCA as presented. They feel like that is a very conservative list, which we don't have to follow unless we just are comfortable with it, but they neither have recommended limiting ourselves for something that the state said is allowed. So I emailed those to you and also gave you the investment advisor that we're using's phone number and contact information in case you had specific questions you would like to ask him about these investments. And so, it's our recommendation to change our financial policy to be in line with what TCA allows and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Wright?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Have one board and commission appoint Mr. O'Brien F. Kidd, replacing in July the service of Mr. Clay Beach on the Water and Sewer Board.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
And I'm sure he's watching on TV, but we've got Mr. Ron Crabtree, who is expiring June 2016, so you've got that for reappointment. So that'd be for a next meeting. And Mr. Lyons, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Beach has served ably and very well on the Water and Sewer Board for many, many years. I think it would be good if we could get a proclamation prepared for him and have him come to the city council meeting.
Be glad to.
Any beer permits, Ms. Wright?
No, sir, not tonight.
Okay, any statements?
Yes, sir, there is one.
Mr. Smotherman, can we get a motion to pay the statements?
Move and pay the bills.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I did skip over a recommended appointment. I apologize. These are for future, future meetings, but you have Ricardo Jones to the Murfreesboro Housing Authority, you have Ken Halliburton, the Planning Commission, and Dr. Linda Gibbler as the liaison for the Murfreesboro City Schools, and Eddie Miller for reappointment. So that'll be for our next meeting. Mr. Lyons, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, the 16th, the 23rd, and the 30th or before then, we will meet to?
For sure the 16th and we will, we'll have another meeting after the 16th, you know, likely the 23rd, but a special meeting would be an option and the 30th is certainly available if necessary.
Any other business to come before council from staff or council members?
Mayor, I'd like to make a request that the city flags be lowered to half-staff for the remainder of the week in memory of Mary Huda and Captain Jeff Cuss, who lost his life at the Smyrna Air Base today.
Glad to.
Absolutely.
Good.
Again, thank you, Eddie, for bringing that up, but our thoughts and prayers are with the Huda family.
Hey, can I ask something real quick? Other business on the, we had a couple of these tonight. What, Rob, or some, one of you guys maybe asked, what does it cost developer, whoever, the person who applies to change a PUD? Do they, do they pay a fee to do that?
Yes, sir. There is a fee.
$600.
Math, well, there's math.
$600.
The PUD amendment would be the same as a rezoning fee, which is a flat $600 fee, whether they're amending a PUD or rezoning it to a standard traditional bulk zoning classification.
How long has that been, 600 bucks? You know, I mean, like, approximately?
I believe we adjusted our fee schedule, I want to say about maybe 67 years ago, something around, around there.
I mean, is it, am I reading that right, that it's a lot of man-hours whenever that happens?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of man-hours that goes into each application, that's for sure.
Just, I mean, just the man-hours we take to do that on something, you know, PUDs kind of strike me as, they're a little more sensitive to me because the idea of it, the essence of it, is that they're telling us exactly what they're supposed, you know, what they are gonna do and, and there was a reason for that on the front end. And so to me, I'm, I don't know that I'm really, but while we're sitting here in budget time, I'm kind of sitting here thinking whether or not, I mean, I'm, you know, this may be one of those things where a fee for use, raising that fee might be appropriate if you really try to talk about what we collect as a percentage of waste management, what we collect and percentage of man-hours to deal with PUD changes is significant. I mean, by the time it goes through the entire planning commission, after it goes through you guys once, goes through you guys again, then to us once for public hearing, I mean, so anyway, I'm gonna throw that out there for you guys to think about a little bit. We'll just leave it at that, but.
Worktop conversation.
Yeah. All right, anyway.
Let's get to it.
Maybe we can talk about it in retreat.